We'll call this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission to order. The first item of business is citizen comments. Do we have anybody who is ready to share some thoughts with us, Rita?
We have zero attendees.
Zero attendees, okay, well, that'll take care of that agenda item. It looks like the minutes are being deferred until the October 5th meeting for last week's minutes, so we'll move on from that. And that will bring us to our agenda item, which is the housing element, missing middle housing. So invite Lori and Debbie to virtually join us.
Evening.
Good evening.
That was a quick start to this.
Yeah, you probably weren't quite ready for that.
I wasn't quite ready for it. Anyway, hello, nice to see you all. So this evening, as Chair Orangeall mentioned, we're going to start our discussion of missing middle housing. We touched on this very briefly in January, but then spent most of the spring and summer talking about commercial zoning and potential changes in the TOD and that kind of thing. But now we're back to housing. And last week, you heard a presentation of housing data that I hope you'll find helpful. And I'm going to include the PowerPoint from that meeting with your next agenda. As you know, missing middle housing is one way to create compact and walkable transit supportive neighborhoods while increasing the housing supply and providing a variety of housing types and starter homes potentially. So missing middle housing also responds to demographic shifts. We've talked about the growth in the number of single person households, a larger proportion of elderly in the total population, and a reduced average family size. Missing middle housing is also an efficient use of land, and that yields environmental benefits. So before we get started, I wanted to share a video with you. This video was actually sent to Debbie and to me from the city manager. And he asked that we share it with the planning commission. And I thought, okay, we'll liven up our meeting here. And so I'm going to ask Rita to share the video. It's about 10 minutes long, and then we'll get back to the topic.
Okay, one moment, let me queue it up here. One second. Here we go.
So I spend a lot of time looking at houses on Zillow. And lately, I noticed that even in places where houses are usually expensive, they seem even more expensive. Like here in the San Francisco Bay Area.
What has the last year been like?
It's shocking. Buyers are paying 15% to 20% above asking price now. I had a listing in South San Francisco, 32 offers, 31 very unhappy buyers.
For years, the Bay Area has been an extreme example of how difficult it is to find affordable housing in the U.S. It's where Silicon Valley bus drivers sleep in their cars at night because they can't afford housing near work, and where school teachers can't afford to live in the counties they teach. But it's not just the Bay Area. The lack of affordable housing is a national problem, and right now, it's worse than ever.
We've seen over the last year, housing prices reach a level they've never reached before in American history. They kind of just look like a rocket ship, you know, going to the moon. Housing prices reaching a median of $350,000 for the median American home.
Those prices have made rents more expensive and have made homeownership less attainable for millions of Americans. So why is this happening? And how do we bring that rocket ship closer to earth? We can think of today's housing prices in terms of a supply and demand problem. On the demand side, there are a few things happening. The first is a generational shift in who's buying homes.
Millennials are the biggest generation in American history, and they're aging into their prime home buying years.
On top of that, mortgage rates are at an all time low, which means it's very cheap to borrow the money needed to buy a house. That's enticed more people to buy if they can, making demand for houses even higher. The problem is that supply isn't matching that demand. From 2010 to 2019, there were fewer homes built in the U.S. than in any decade since the 1960s. In particular, the construction of smaller entry level housing, the kind made for first time home buyers, has dropped dramatically. In the 1980s, those starter homes made up around 40% of all homes built. Today, it's closer to 7%. In 2018, one estimate said the U.S. housing market was 2.5 million homes short of meeting demand. By the end of 2020, it was 3.8 million.
And that's driving a big part of the problem, both for renters and for people who want to be homeowners.
The shortage is worst in the places where demand is highest, near good jobs, transit, and schools. And one pretty straightforward solution to that is to just build more homes in those places. But for years, there's been one big obstacle to that. We aren't allowed to. Take a look at this map of the Bay Area. It's showing something called zoning, or local regulations that decide what can be built where. This much of the region is zoned for residential housing. In blue are areas zoned to allow multifamily housing, while the areas shaded in pink are zoned for single family housing only. That's 82% of all residential land in the Bay Area.
What it means is that you've banned the ability for anyone to build anything other than a single unit of housing on that lot of land.
And in many towns, like Atherton, they've excluded all multifamily housing from their neighborhoods.
And that doesn't just mean a giant apartment building. It means things like duplexes, things like, you know, fourplexes, things like that are illegal in the majority of the country.
This is an example of something called exclusionary zoning. It's a big part of the reason for the housing supply shortage in the U.S. And single family only zoning is just one way local laws limit how much housing we can build. Many places also employ height restrictions. In Cupertino, California, some areas are zoned for multifamily buildings, but they don't allow any buildings over two stories. Parking requirements are often written into zoning laws, too. Cupertino requires developers to set aside space for two parking spaces for each unit of multifamily housing. That means if you were building an apartment complex that had 100 units, you'd need to find space for 200 parking spots, which usually means buildings that size don't get built at all.
They lower the number of units they're actually building so they can save space for those parking spaces. And then those units become more expensive because the land still stays the same cost to the developer. And you then get a situation where potentially more affordable units turn into higher income servicing units.
Another feature of many zoning laws is minimum lot sizes. It means builders are legally required to allot a minimum amount of land for each home, often a large amount of land. In Cupertino, most single family lots must be at least 5,000 square feet each.
Starter homes are usually around 1,400 to 1,500 square feet. And so you've basically banned all that type of housing.
In Atherton, the minimum lot size for homes is one acre, more than 43,000 square feet, which makes it virtually impossible to build any kind of affordable home there. Together, exclusionary zoning laws like this push builders across the country to focus on bigger luxury homes instead of smaller starter homes or multifamily housing.
Essentially creating gated communities in public spaces. What you are saying is that you are only allowing people who have already been able to partake in the wealth of this country and to grow their income and have access to high opportunity jobs and education to live in our neighborhoods.
Historically, some of the first zoning laws in the U.S. were engineered for that exactly, to block people of color, and in particular, Black Americans, from living in predominantly white neighborhoods. Today, the laws don't explicitly mention race, but they continue to worsen segregation. In the Bay Area, the more single family zoning in a neighborhood, the whiter it is. But all this has another effect as well. By shrinking the pot of new housing getting built while demand keeps rising, it drives up the cost of housing for everyone. Changing zoning laws can be difficult, and often the biggest obstacles are the wealthiest residents.
The process is usually defined by who shows up to these public meetings. And what you have is often a much whiter, wealthier crowd, the ones who come and say, I don't want this in my community, I'm concerned about what will happen to my property values. And then there's this kind of code word, neighborhood character.
Remember those teachers I mentioned who can't afford to live in the counties where they teach? Well, in 2018, one local school district proposed a solution, building affordable housing units for teachers in San Jose. It caused an uproar among San Jose parents who petitioned against changing the neighborhood. It may not seem like a big deal when one wealthy neighborhood blocks one multifamily development. The problem is that it happens all the time. Communities block new housing everywhere.
People are, when they hear this kind of rhetoric, very confused because they're like, you know, I don't want to live in a place with 10,000 apartment buildings. It doesn't even make sense to do that. And they're right. No one is saying that there should be every neighborhood in every city should be, you know, 10,000 foot apartment buildings or anything like that.
But even small gradual changes to zoning laws can have an impact. For example, allowing smaller homes on smaller lots, or simply allowing duplexes would double capacity for housing in some areas. In recent years, some cities like Berkeley, Minneapolis, and Portland have taken the huge step of ending single family zoning. But the problem is nationwide.
The real fix is going to happen when these decisions start being made and start being regulated at the statewide level or at the federal level in some capacity.
Today, the Biden administration is attempting to tackle exclusionary zoning through a $5 billion program that would give money to localities that remove exclusionary zoning policies. But even that may not be enough.
This is more than any presidential administration has done on this topic, either Democrat or Republican. It is also very small in the face of this problem. They want to take action, they recognize how big of a deal it is, but they are not actually willing to create the kind of political blowback from often very high value voters living in suburban environments.
Ending America's housing shortage will require real political willpower. And it'll require people across the country to take a look at their own neighborhoods. What gets built? Who gets excluded? And how to make homeownership achievable for the millions who are shut out?
So that was provocative, I could say. And I think really the idea is that we are being given some mandates through the State Growth Management Act, through Vision 2050, the multi-county planning policies, and through the countywide planning policies to take a look at this issue. And I will say, we have already talked to our lobbyists this year who are telling us that the state, the last couple of years, has tried to mandate missing middle housing. And they are not going to, it should not be a surprise if that is something that comes before this next session as well. So there's a lot of pressure from outside to talk about this. And I thought I would just, I included the information in your memo, but I thought I'd just go over it briefly. The Growth Management Act was amended last year, and it says that we should plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments of the population and promote a variety of residential densities and housing types. And then in particular, it speaks to duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes inside the urban growth boundary. And Kenmore is inside the urban growth boundary, so we have to take that seriously. We're supposed to, according to one clause, include a statement of goals, policies, objectives, and mandatory provisions within the urban growth boundary related to duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes. Vision 2050 also has language about missing middle housing. It says collectively, cities and counties must plan for a wider variety of housing types and densities, particularly moderate density housing. And in its policies and actions, it states that we should be expanding housing capacity for moderate density housing and update regulations and strategies to reduce barriers to the development and preservation of moderate density housing. And then finally, when we get to King County, the countywide planning policies, which again have been adopted by the Growth Management Planning Council and forward to the King County Council, but have not formally been adopted. They recall that language from the State Growth Management Act and talk about in the urban growth boundary, looking at duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes, and expanding capacity for moderate density housing throughout the jurisdiction, especially in areas currently zoned for lower density, single family development. So last time, we talked about reasons to support missing middle. It provides more housing options, it increases housing supply, which this, the video I thought was good at explaining the difference between demand and supply. It also thickens the community. That's a Joe Minicozy phrase that you'll remember. It uses land more efficiently, supports environmental sustainability, supports transit, and again, is consistent with the regional goals. So the community survey results. So we did our statistically valid community survey, and it stated that all the community wants a welcoming and inclusive community, but is generally opposed to changes that could allow more people to live in Kenmore. And traffic congestion and tree preservation were specifically mentioned. The community also acknowledged that a range of housing types is important, and smaller housing types in particular were mentioned, although a very small number, 32%, supported smaller lot sizes. And then a fairly large half of the respondents were not certain that building more housing would even help with housing affordability. So we have these tensions, and there are serious tensions. And so that is the backdrop to the discussion this evening, which is to begin to talk about policy options and policy directions. And I want to stop briefly because Commissioner Vanderlin had asked me to get information or provide information about current zoning, just to refresh everyone. In the city's single family zones, those are R1, R4, and R6. Duplexes and triplexes are not addressed, not permitted. Townhomes are permitted if you go through a special process, either a conditional use permit, or you go through a subdivision that allows townhome development. You can certainly build duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes in the city's multifamily zones. Those are like the R12, et cetera. And those zones, the issue for missing middle is that the price of the land, because you can build apartments, is cost prohibitive, hard to build a duplex when you could build a multi-story apartment building. Similarly, in the city's commercial zones, mixed use is pretty much the standard in most of the city's commercial zones. And that means you can do residential certainly, but you have to combine it either in the same building or in another building on the same lot with a commercial use. So again, the value of the property is such that building a duplex or a triplex on a commercial lot is probably pretty unrealistic. And with that, I would turn to the policy questions, there were a whole bunch of them, and we'll get as far as we can tonight. But before we get started, you may have other questions.
Lori, just to, I was gonna ask a quick clarifying question on your way to share about the zoning. What percentage of Kenmore's, I guess, total land is in the R1, R4, and R6 zones that duplexes and triplexes are currently not allowed? Do you?
95% of the land, I think it's 78%. I'd have to look at the exact numbers. I think 78% of the community's land is zoned for residential, strictly residential. So that's.
And 95% of that is in these R1, R4, and R6?
Correct.
Zones, okay.
Correct.
So virtually, virtually all of it, okay? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And in fact, in the, during the 2015 Comprehensive Plan Update, when the housing element was being done, it was noted that Kenmore has a much smaller percentage of multifamily zoning than other communities, other arch communities, when they were doing the research. So that's just reflected in that 95%. Okay, well, turning to the policy questions, I think probably the best way to start is to talk about concerns, the planning commission's concerns about missing middle housing. And what I really hope to do is to identify concerns so that when we move to the second question, what are possible options to manage or handle concerns? So we can think about those two things together, because if we have an understanding of what the issues are, and we have some of those from the community, and the planning commission will have others, then maybe we can tackle some of those.
Yeah, invite others to weigh in on their list of potential concerns. So anybody want to start? Go ahead, Mr. Vanderlin.
Well, I'll just get it, pick it off here. Lori, an answer to your question, I think in my mind, you have really put your finger on what the concerns are in your section, MMH and Kenmore. I think it really comes down to whatever decisions you'd make, really comes down to design and what sort of lot sizes, design considerations, height, these sorts of things. I think those, depending on how those are determined or what decisions you're made, they mitigate, at least for me, a lot of my concerns about mixing more dense housing types within single family neighborhoods. I guess that's a way of punting the discussion down the road a little bit to say, well, yeah, all of these are possibilities, but I think it's getting into the weeds of what are the design requirements for those would lead to acceptability.
Yeah. Maybe I'll just piggyback real quickly on what Mike said. I think that's absolute right. Certainly, there are some, you know, I suppose discreet concerns of, you know, that I think are associated with, you know, a lot of multifamily developments, the traffic, parking, noise, some of the things that we, I know, dealt with, at least on a small scale with ADUs. I mean, obviously, we're talking about a much smaller scale, I think, here than, you know, than, you know, they mentioned the huge, you know, multifamily buildings. But I think they, those would still exist. I think there was mention in one of your points about the possibility for a displacement of some residents. I think that's a valid concern. And I think you really hit the, you know, the central tension is, you know, the community support, you know, may not be there on a widespread basis, you know, and there's the call for preserving existing housing. So how can we, you know, thread that needle and make something, you know, that's potentially acceptable to either a specific neighborhood where there might be a pilot project, or, you know, if we want to be, you know, go to a citywide. I think we're not anywhere near any decision on that. But so those are just, yeah, some things I put down. Go ahead, Suzanne.
So for me, for a lot of the discussions we have when we talk about building, often there's a concern or a desire to make whatever we're doing attractive to builders. And I feel like that's another big issue that we have here, is that we can maybe make some kind of adjustments with zoning, but there's still maybe the problem that was mentioned before on the video and also by Lori, that the cost of the land is so expensive, you know, that it's going to discourage builders. So that's one of my concerns is, let's say we go ahead and decide that we can build duplexes or triplexes or whatever in a residential area, if that's going to somehow drive up costs for builders and then drive up the cost of the home, are we achieving the goal that we're hoping for?
Let me follow up on Suzanne's comment, which I think is an important one. I think what we have to understand here is what are we really trying to accomplish here? I think a goal of affordability was something we all talked about earlier. I'm not sure that's doable in any real sense in terms of we talk affordability. We're not going to be able to, any of the zoning changes we talk about in single family neighborhoods because of the land pricing and the existing development that you have to, you'd have to bulldoze an $800,000 home to begin with. That's going to make this very, very difficult. So we're not talking about increasing the amount of truly affordable homes. So what are we talking about? We're talking about starter homes. So what is the price of a starter home? This is one of the questions I talked about at the end of our last discussion. I'm concerned about, is that really realistic? So I need to understand that myself a lot more before we go too much further on this. But it seems like what we're really talking about here is we want, is the need to have more. And more is going to probably be fairly expensive homes because the economics drive it that way. And what we're really going toward is increased density is going to be required in order to, in any way, achieve sorts of numbers we're talking about. And I think that again is where you begin to get into other community resistance, because what does density mean, particularly if you're living right next door to it? You build a triplex on a lot, two blocks away, you may not care too much about that. But if you're living on either side of it, and all of a sudden, you've lost the sun, or you've got a whole different experience, that's a concern. So that gets me again back to the design. So I guess, summing up, I think what I would like to see us do is recognize, in reality, what we're talking about here. We're talking about more. How do we get more units into the same, so do we squeeze more, more units, more people into the same constrained geographic area? And how do we do that? And what's the objective of doing that? If the objective is simply and purely to have more, then that drives a whole different set of discussions. We don't have to get into affordability. We can talk more about designs and what that would do. The other question is, are we really talking about starter homes? And I still don't have a good answer for that because I don't really have a sense of what would do, what cost to build a duplex in our single family neighborhood in Kenmore. Now, how would you go about doing that? Are there vacant lots that you could go to? How many of those are there? What's the price of those? If there were a whole lot of those and not enough to meet our goals, or what we're being asked to consider, what are the alternatives? So pricing, I think, is important. I'll stop.
Yeah, and I would say, just following up on your comment from the last meeting, Arches putting together a list of prices, both for ownership and rental housing, duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes, to give us a sense of what those prices look like and how they relate to the average median income.
And I think it's important to consider, when we look at that, is you may, a builder may be able to build a duplex or a triplex at a certain price point, but they may not be able to maximize or be maximizing their profitability or their ability to sell that property at that lower price point, that the economy and the economics of this are likely to drive them to wanting to build, needing to build more expensive houses, which may not be much less than what a single family house is today, depending on what sort of amenities are added to it.
This reminds me of a conversation we had several years ago about housing. And I remember Commissioner Nugent, at the time, provided an article, it was sort of like trickle down housing. And I'm reminded of that with the thought that new construction is always more expensive than preexisting construction. But if currently people are filling older units that might be less expensive, and they had an opportunity to find a type of housing that they were interested in, in new construction, it might actually free up some less expensive housing in the community. So I just passed that along because I so distinctly remember that conversation.
Well, that might be a great point with regard to how you move housing around. But I think that there's a couple different issues that are presented to us by our constituents. presented to us by our constituents and our electeds. And one of them is that I think is the issue of multiple, you know, apartments and and larger buildings to provide apartments and condos or whatever. And so I guess my first thought is, and I've said this before, is I think we need to look at Kenmore and say, where is our line on those types of developments? And where are we going to say that no more developments beyond those lines is kind of like an urban growth boundary is going to happen? And then my second question on that issue is, what, even if we allow such multiple unit housing, what is the reality of what the rent's going to look like? And I talked about that, about this latest little housing development down the road here. But so that's, I think that's one issue. The second thought is the commonly done in other cities is you allow more dense development along your arterials or your or your main throughways. Well, the problem with that is what you have in Shoreline, where you drive down, there are different roads, and you never know which road is a throughway or an arterial, and you see three plexes, four plexes, side by side all the way down. And I I think of, say, 68th, and all of you can probably think of different roads that might be of the same example. And all of a sudden, we see a tremendous amount of three places, townhouses, and everything else, which does change the nature of how people view our city. I mean, even currently, there's this large piece of property up on the top of Kenmore. See, the roundabout at 68th on the way to the the junior high school. And that I can just see in the future, future, that could be sold to developers. And and they can put in a whole slew of of townhomes there or whatever. And that would significantly change the community around that development. I go back also to my concern, which has already been expressed by Michael, is what actually is going to happen to to prices? What is the reality of if we were to zone like everybody else would like us to zone? What is really going to be affordable in the end? And I'm not so certain it's going to end up that affordable because land is expensive, no matter how you cut it here in Kenmore. We've been very fortunate. It's it's a very livable city. But on the other hand, maybe we can do a little smaller lots with smaller houses that would be appropriate to different residential communities. That might be easier to for folks in those communities easier to swallow. But these are all very difficult issues. And I I also believe that we should look at where we can put the most density and then have some flexibility in certain areas without destroying what the community feels is the nature of Kenmore, although I do understand the minority and the other issues related to allowing high-cost housing, you're you're not allowing others to be able to purchase. And I I get that. Thank you.
I think Nathan has his.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll I'll go. So originally, what you said, Laurie, trickle-down housing, I mean, that sounded like a good idea. But what soon occurred to me was, looking back, when we discussed the city's growth within the last few years, we saw how substantially the city grew in population. So I I like the idea of trickle-down housing, trying to make more affordable options available. But I think there'd be such great competition, even at the top, from those outside moving to Kenmore, because we've seen such substantial growth within the city that I I don't know that trickle-down housing is going to be a concept that actually occurs here, even if we do make more housing capacity available. And so I I like that idea. I just don't know how realistic it is when looking at how substantially we've grown over the last few years and how many new residents we've attracted from outside of the city, competing with residents within the city who may want to expand or or purchase housing at a higher cost.
That's a great point, Nathan.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Expanding, kind of following along that same logic. In the past, we were able to have starter homes, build starter homes by moving out. And that's what happened. You'd go out further from wherever your suburbs, your main city was, where the land was cheap, and you'd build small houses in economical spaces. Well, the Growth Management Act has prevents us from doing that now for demonstratively good or bad reasons. It's a, you know, it's a political decision there, but that's the truth. So what I think we need now is a new option that replaces that original starter home methodology. And I think probably, in my thinking about this, what it really comes down to is really it's the multifamily development option. The starter place may really be more, instead of a single-family home, which was outreach financially for just about everybody today, it may be something more like a condominium development, where you can, you can have ownership, you can build equity, and you can begin to be part of the community that that you want to live in. Encouraging that, of course, is outside of the idea of the missing middle. But I think it achieves the same goal of you create starter homes by more efficiently using the available land that we have. More units on a multifamily lot is going to give you a lower per-unit price and get you around the problem we have of trying to build a smaller middle density within expensive urban real estate today. So I'd like to, I would encourage us to expand the discussion and focus more on the goal of what missing middle is, rather than get too hard on the need to provide provisions for duplexes, triplexes, or or whatever. I'd rather focus on the goal than the methodology.
I was wondering how people felt about the cottage housing concept. If you know about, excuse me, the, you know, the piece of property that I'm talking about at the top of 68th, that's a fairly large piece of property, and it could be used in a cottage type of development. I'm just curious how people felt about whether that's really something that's doable, acceptable, a possibility. I'm just curious.
From the pictures and attachments that were sent out in staff memo, I think it's it's a good approach or a good attempt. But looking at those examples, I didn't see much in terms of parking, and I feel like that could be an issue that could come up, especially when you try and have so many units on such a smaller area, it would resort to maybe street parking. Just a quick glance at those examples, it didn't look like those cottages were big enough to have garages attached to them. At least from those examples, there could be some out there, but just kind of going off of what city staff sent out, that would be a concern of mine. So I think they're feasible, and I like the idea. But I feel if we were to do that, it would be more beneficial to locate them near transit centers, like the Kenmore Park and Ride, or along the other bus rapid transit routes we have along 522, which kind of, I think I'm jumping ahead here. But Laurie, can you remind me really quick which city it was, had the missing middle specific zoning?
Um, I think Seattle has missing middle specific zoning. And to ask, answer your question about the cottage housing, that there are garages, but I think it's probably one space per house. And the garage is usually are at the back. They're they're kind of grouped together, not each house. They may be grouped in in segments of two or three, but there are parking requirements for those cottage housing.
Kind of going off of that, though, I know I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but I feel that it kind of ties in. Even with those cottage housing, it may be more feasible for builders to reduce the parking requirements. Maybe instead of, I I'm not sure what the the current requirements are from two to one or whatever they may be. And I think it would be more feasible to do that if we maybe did something like Seattle and had a missing middle zone that kind of went along and was near enough to public transit and the bus rapid transit along 522, to maybe start to kind of tinker with some of those other building requirements, such as height restrictions and parking requirements when there are other options given, such as public transit, if that makes sense. That might be a little convoluted. I'm happy to maybe expand more upon that. But I know I might be jumping ahead here. But it's kind of going off of that cottage housing. I think it would be feasible. This is jumping back to Dwight. I think it would be feasible. And I think it would be even more feasible if we were able to try and locate that in an area where it would make sense to reduce parking and make it more attractive to builders to develop.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a quick, a quick point, then, and then I'll certainly turn it over to Tracy, and I think back at his hand up, too. I think cottage housing, now, one question, you know, I think it it's great in concept in those those pictures. I mean, it looks like a really lovely place. I wonder how many places in Kenmore, I mean, you mentioned that one, that one location, Dwight, I think it's a very limited number of places that would have the land available. And I'd also wonder about, would developers be interested in building that? Or, you know, townhomes seem to be the kind of the hot new thing now. Would there be maybe a bigger market for that from a, you know, developer standpoint? So again, it sounds, it sounds like a really nice, you know, idea. I just, I wonder about the practicalities of the them coming to Kenmore for, you know, land and and marketability. So go ahead, Tracy.
The first thing I'd like to say is that I actually really love the idea of missing middle housing types as infill, as like small developments on lots here and there that fit the unique needs of of homeowners. So I'm not thinking about like that that lot on 68th and 190th, and not thinking about that kind of development for this. I'm thinking about like, like the lot that my house is on. It's a split level. It could be split into a duplex without changing much about how the house fits into the neighborhood. And so for me, and and that might meet the needs of some homeowners, like people who have, are moving towards elder care, and they want their, you know, their parents to move in with them, or families where, extended families. It just feels like it could be a really positive way for people to meet their unique needs. And I'm not really sure why that kind of development is not allowed. Like, conceptually, it doesn't, I don't, I don't see why that's not, you know, I, it just doesn't make sense to me. But my concerns, I guess, thinking about it more broadly, are tree preservation, which our community has has brought up. And I do think that that's a valid concern. I know that there is a tension between tree preservation and development, but I would like to personally move away from that. I think it's a false dichotomy that we either have trees or we have development. Like, I'd like to think about ways we can preserve our trees and and meet our development goals or provide homes for people. And I want, I want to be really careful about making sure that we do prioritize preserving trees because they're important for our community and they're important for our environment. I'm concerned about impervious surfaces. So if you're adding more housing, you're adding more roofs, you're adding more driveways, you're adding more stormwater runoff, and it's already a big problem in our watershed. And so if you're adding more, that's a problem. That, for me, is a concern that I feel like could be met through requiring green stormwater infrastructure, like rain gardens, which I would personally would love to see it for all new development, not just missing middle. But I feel like there has to be enough land accorded to the the house in order to provide that kind of green stormwater infrastructure. So then lot size comes into play a bit. And then another concern is that we would just take this opportunity to have missing middle housing as infill and then just kind of eat up all available land. Instead of, I think, doing something like what Dwight is suggesting, is deciding like, what lands are we going to preserve and protect as natural open space? And how are we going to plan for that as we're planning for our built environment as well? Like, how are we really going to protect our critical areas in a way that we need to, so that those critical areas can provide natural ecological services for us? Protect us from flooding, things like that. How are we going to be planning for our neighbors of other species, like by, you know, making sure that we're leaving wildlife corridors and not just gobbling up all that land with all these different housing types? Yeah, those are some of the concerns that that I have. And also, I thought Jim Howard brought up some really good points, too. Like, we don't necessarily have the infrastructure built to do all this infill without putting more pressures on the lack of infrastructure that we already have. And I think he's thinking about things like sidewalks and parks. And maybe there was one other thing. Oh, I think he did mention stormwater as well. So that's another concern. None of those things, I I don't think they're insurmountable. They're just things that I would like us to consider as we're having this discussion. So thank you.
Well, shall we move to the second question, which is the second part of this question? And I've heard I've heard many suggestions, what approaches or strategies could minimize these concerns and maximize neighborhood compatibility? It's kind of two sides of the same coin. So I heard Commissioner Lutz talk about maybe looking at a specific area for missing metal. There's the question about tree preservation and and impervious surface and the need for green stormwater treatment. Are there other ideas from commissioners, regulatory approaches that could help minimize or relay the concerns we've heard about?
Go ahead, Nathan.
So I, you know, I was thinking more about what Tracy was saying about some of those concerns and how to kind of target growth without encroaching on the environment and making sure that these these developments are done in areas where the infrastructure can support them. And kind of jumping back to what Seattle did, missing middle zoning, if we did an approach like that, we would be able to have a little more control on the specific areas that they go, so that they don't expand too far into more environmentally susceptible areas. And we could make sure that there, that the growth is targeted in an area where the infrastructure can support them, where there is public transportation, where there is the the pre-existing roadways, so that more don't need to be expanded upon. And so I think that that would be potentially an option that would help address some of those concerns that my colleague here brought up.
Yeah, I would just like to add, I, you know, to to the point about Seattle, I liked, I think you had some information about Tacoma doing, I think, a pilot project. And and I couldn't tell if it was on a specific neighborhood or if it was citywide. Laurie, can you maybe, do you know more about the Tacoma approach and?
Yeah, it was, it was actually, I think, it may have been targeted to single-family neighborhoods, but developers had to actually apply. The city didn't choose the locations. Developers came forward with but developers had to actually apply. The city didn't choose the locations. Developers came forward with an application.
Okay.
And the city chose that. I would say that the notion of doing a pilot project first came up in 2019 when we were talking, having early discussions about missing middle housing. I think the idea of having a pilot project at this point, the train may be out of the station. And so, I mean, we could propose a pilot project, but it doesn't really address the this, the dictates from our policy documents that have been recently adopted. In the Growth Management Act and Vision 2050 and the Countywide Planning Policies.
Okay, so it's, it's, we gotta, gotta go big or, or that's kind of our, it sounds like that might be our mandate, huh?
Yeah, I don't mean necessarily go big. I'm saying, I think, rather than talk about an infill or a pilot project, we've seen the examples from those, but really to talk about, is there a place in Kenmore? Should there be a specific location? How far do we want to go with this topic or not? Rather than focusing on a pilot project, I think we're past that. That's my perspective.
Mike and then Dwight, go ahead.
I do. I'll phrase this as a question, maybe Lori or Debbie. In my reading of all of the sources we're talking about here, I didn't read mandate. I, what I read was that there was a mandate, it was using words like encourage. It's using words like make allowances for. I don't see anything that says thou shalt, thou must. There's much more of, I think, room here for an incremental approach, particularly we're seeing this is a 20-year plan in some cases. So I think, yeah, there's the expectation that you're going to consider these things and make some allowances and planning for it. But I don't see anything here that says that we have to jump in right away first year, that we could take some sort of an incremental approach. A pilot may could mean lots of different things. But I want to be careful that we don't over engineer this in the beginning, lose our opportunity to learn as we go along.
Yeah, I did want to point out the one section that really, to me at least, reads as a mandate, which is in the Growth Management Act. And it says the planning, the housing element is to include a statement of goals, policies, objectives, and mandatory provisions for the preservation, improvement, and development of housing, including single-family residences and within an urban growth area boundary, moderate density, density housing options, including but not limited to duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes. So because of that phrase, mandatory provisions, I actually did read that as a mandate in the Growth Management Act.
Well, I think one could read different words differently, but looking at all of that together, I think there clearly is a message here that there's expectation that you're going to have to, I mean, the whole Growth Management Act is based upon the concept of increasing density, shoving more people in the same amount of space. So yeah, you're going to have to consider and come up with plans for stuff. And particularly, they seem to be putting a premium on duplexes, triplexes, townhomes. But again, I don't see anything that says you have to do this all year one, or it doesn't say what exactly you need to do. You get, there's choices and there's room to experiment in here and to go into it and figure out what's going on. And also time to let the economy settle out. We're in a pretty changeable period of time right now. So I just want to be careful that we don't become too prescriptive or too over eager to jump into this and then build ourselves into a corner that we may regret five to 10 years down the line.
Well, I think the good news is, is that policies and regulations can be changed. If they don't want, you can change them. And the idea of the comprehensive plan, it is a 20-year document. So you're not only thinking about year one, you're thinking about year 20 and how to accommodate anticipated growth and what you want the community to look like in 20 years. So not only are you looking at what is happening today, you also have to consider what the end result is. And I think that's why, you know, Lori was saying that, you know, just the response with a pilot project might be a start, but you have to think, we have to do more than that to meet the intent of a 20-year plan. Certainly, it can be phased. I think the message is we can't not do anything. We have to do something. So I think the first thing the Planning Commission has to sort of agree on is that we are going to do something to address missing middle housing. I don't think we can ignore it. I think we have to tackle it. And I think Lori did a great job of outlining some potential options and what the pros and cons were. And I know it's not going to be an easy discussion for the Planning Commission, and you've raised a lot of valid concerns. But despite those concerns, I think we have to come up with an approach that makes sense. So I just wanted to kind of reemphasize that, that we recognize the concerns, but we have to come up with an approach.
And just to be clear, I don't disagree with you. I think that is the attempt. We need to come up with an approach. My view of this though, is in reading what's in the Growth Management Act and elsewhere, is that we have a significant amount of flexibility of how we do that. Yes, we need to address, have some kind of a plan, whatever that might be, for missing metal and increased density. But I don't think there is, it is absolutely prescriptive on how and when we do that.
So this might be a good segue into next set of questions or not, if there are other comments.
I think I was next.
Yep, go ahead Dwight.
Thank you. So now I've got two folks to comment after. Mike's is a well-taken point, but I want to say that in support of how Debbie very aptly put the issues, that's what's written, is that do not misunderstand that the Puget Sound Growth, the Puget Sound Regional Government, the King County Government, those items are, they may sound nicely put, but when you're up against a developer or up against other situations where they're suing the city over a development or what should have been a development, those do weigh in as well as the State Growth Management Act. So I think that the incremental way of doing it is most likely the best way. But we also have to come up in this 20-year plan with some sort of statement and commitment toward a a growth that meets the concept of what is being put down on us. And since we are in the urban growth area, we are sort of stuck. Now, that being said, I want to go back to Tracy's comments. And first I wanted to suggest is that I read that we, for instance, I read that we have been authorized to have a canopy evaluation of our trees in our city that's coming up. There's that and there's a lot of other research and documents and documentation about our environmental needs. And I think that we really need to have that set of information for an overlay when we even consider the reality of what zoning might be or might not be, what's really possible. I always say where the line should be drawn and around what environmental elements, should it be, make sure that we exclude development? What should our tree canopy look like and how should we protect it for real? Not, not in a way which does not do anything. I think that our, even the City Council felt that we need to strengthen our, our tree ordinances. But that's just one example. I think Tracy's perspective on, on the environment, I wholly support. But in order to actually put something together with rational statements, we need a little more information. And there's a couple of different ways to go. But I, I'm with Debbie and Lori that those statements below the Growth Management Act do have weight. And I certainly don't want to go to court on the wrong side of that weight. So I think there's a way for us to mitigate that, but we have to really think about it and have the right information to do it properly. Thank you.
Yep, go ahead Tracy.
Okay, so I am answering the question about approaches and strategies that might minimize concerns. And I think some of them have come up already, but I just want to run through what I said, just to make sure that I put them on the table. So one would be low-impact development standards. And making sure that we're really, really being low-impact to the extent possible in our development. The green stormwater infrastructure, that would include rain gardens, that so that we're using, you know, our ecosystem to function sort of like a wetland, you know, we're using green infrastructure, natural infrastructure instead of technology. I'm interested in learning more about the Green Factor Scoring System that Jim Howard recommended. And I don't know if that's the same or different as low-impact development, but that's something that's interesting to me. And then I am also interested in exploring design standards for this missing middle housing development. So that I think a lot of times people are concerned about how new development is going to affect the character of their neighbors. And sometimes I think that is exclusionary and I'm not in support of the use of zoning for that reason. But I do understand that if we can create nicely built things that fit into an already nicely built environment, that'll create a more aesthetically pleasing neighborhoods and environments for everybody. So I'm interested in design standards. And then kind of dovetailing off what Dwight just said, and I think Nathan as well, like I do want to be really mindful about where we're putting this development. I feel like I would rather actually have missing middle housing in our community if that meant that we could more strongly protect our natural areas. And I'm thinking about, and not including, but not limited to, like I'm thinking about the whole Swamp Creek corridor and the wetlands associated with it, the whole Sammamish River corridor. And any, I mean, that, that system has been so changed, but anything that we can do to kind of restore those ecological functions is going to benefit us in the long term. So if we could find the appropriate places to put this missing middle housing so that we could protect these other areas that will serve us into the future and the other species that we live with into the future, I think that could be a very positive thing and an exciting thing. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Going back to what Tracy's comments, I think that's an important point here. I'd be interested in knowing, within the areas that Tracy just mentioned, particularly around Swamp Creek and others, what in those areas isn't already designated as a nature zone? We went through and redid our zoning. We created specific zones for nature preservation. So it'd be, in order to understand where the vulnerable areas are, it'd be nice to know which of those areas, Tracy, maybe you could, you could help identify those, so you can understand what's, what isn't protected today that we might want to consider. Or we'd want to be very careful about what sort of zoning we allowed there.
I think that's probably a question that's better for staff to answer because I have a kind of intuitive or felt sense about it, but I don't know like the, you know, granular details about how it's all zoned. And I know there's been some acquisition of wetlands down near, like down by Kenmore Elementary in that kind of area of 73rd. So that's great. And I know that a lot of the zoning of theirs are one, which I think is to protect that area, and that's great. There is a little stretch that I'm very concerned about. I brought it up before, so you're not going to be surprised that I say this. That stretch that goes up 73rd in the TOD, that part I'm concerned about. And I want to be clear, like I, I'm, I would love, I know it's private property and that's, that's something that we have to wrestle with, but, and so the R1 zoning is a positive thing in my mind to protect that area. But I'm thinking, I'm going even further when I'm talking about like wildlife quarters and protecting our ecological systems. Like I'm talking about like, can we somehow acquire it so that we can really make it a real, like a real river that's providing river functions and, you know, real habitat for wildlife, you know? Yeah, and so then put our, put our development in other places. And that's part of why I like Joe Manicosi so much, because he did talk about how to create very financially healthy development in areas where it makes sense so that you can, you know, so that we don't have to develop all over, so that we can protect those places that are, and not just protect them for the sake of protecting them, but protect them because that is what's going to make us resilient. That's going to make our communities sustainable and resilient as our climate changes. You know, like New York is going to be underwater in some parts, like flooding is going to be an issue for us. So if we can help that river be a healthy river that's going to be able to do what a river does, then we won't have as many flooding issues as we would otherwise if we continue to try to constrain it and make it, you know, fit our ideas about a river.
Yeah, I think Tracy, you've already mentioned that the city, what the city has done, the way the city protects critical areas, first of all, is a whole set of rules about buffers and setbacks and shoreline regulations that mandate development in the floodplain, et cetera. And then on top of that sits zoning, which again, R1 zoning is not an urban zoning. In fact, we'd probably be in trouble if we tried to do R1 zoning in any circumstances, except for the fact that we're protecting critical areas. Similarly, the R4 in the southern part of the city is a steep slope, was designed to protect steep slopes. So I think the city has done a good job in terms of that zoning. And I think what I'm hearing from you and maybe from Commissioner Thompson is that if we are moving in the direction that Commissioner Lutz is talking about, which is to designate only certain areas for missing middle housing, we should respond to and reflect the city's existing position, which is not to put higher density in areas that involve critical areas. I think that's what I'm hearing. Now, pre-existing zoning is already there. The river is lined with with multifamily development, and I don't envision any scenario in which that would go away unless it was a horrific natural disaster. But regardless, as we look to the future and where density could go, maybe that's not the place, is what I'm hearing you say.
It might be worthwhile, Lori, to bring out the maps we already created, which shows where those areas are, so we can refer to those. So if we're talking about areas where we want to exclude any kind of increased density development, we'll know that these are already been dealt with. We can maybe then be able to focus on some areas where we may want to create some protection that doesn't exist today.
Yeah.
That would just be good information to have.
In the early packet, I think it was maybe in February, and I'll resurrect those maps. We have a series of maps of residential vacant and redevelopable property and the critical area, areas are shown on that map. And then we can look at the zoning map and do the comparison.
Can you maybe somehow put those somewhere out on the web in a file that we could all access as we go along? And I think there may be some other things we might want to put into that file that we might each want to refer back to at some point in the course of this discussion.
I think that would be very helpful. I don't know how to do that. But maybe I can work with our crack technological team to create a specific thing for the Planning Commission. I don't know how to do that. Those, the maps, the critical area maps and the zoning are already on the website under a whole set of maps under Development Services. But you're, I know you're asking for something different and I just don't know how to do it.
That may be enough by itself. Why don't you send out the, the link to that site that we can all take a look at it and then decide whether we need to do any more work? That may be sufficient. I'm just looking at someplace where we could have a repository that we know where we don't do it. So we don't, I don't keep coming back and asking you to generate more paper, which we, none of us really want anyway.
Right.
But on that topic, and I'm not an expert in Kenmore zoning and building and, and all those kinds of codes. But I remember you, Lori, mentioning something about if somebody were to go into one of these buffer areas or sensitive areas, they could do a deal or something, or they could go build into that somehow if they did something in exchange. And maybe I misunderstood that, but that's why I'm asking is clarify my brain.
So, so you cannot go into a critical area or a buffer except in unusual cases. And one case would be if your whole property was constrained. And, and by state law, we would allow you to build one single-family dwelling. And if your whole lot was wetland, you would get to build one single-family dwelling. That's just the rules that we operate under.
Right, I understand that part.
So that's, that's very rare. I, I doubt that, I don't know, maybe we've seen five in the last 15 years. It, it's extremely rare.
I get that part. I got, I, I'm very aware of those, that requirement of law.
Yeah. And then the other circumstance would be, for example, if you had a degraded buffer. In other words, say you had a buffer that was blackberries or maybe had no vegetation. It was lawn all the way to the edge of the critical area. In cases like that, there are some opportunities to reduce the size of your buffer if in fact you do a replanting, you make it better, you make a good buffer against the feature. And then if you do that, there's a, it's a monitoring period. You have to post a bond to say you'll take care of it and then it's monitored over several years. In that case, you may be able to get some buffer reduction if in fact you're making a better buffer so that the outcome is preferred. It's a better outcome.
It's kind of this, yeah, okay. So that was the only two items that as far as clarity, that is, is options for people if they even have those options. Meaning they have to have the right, yeah. I, I'm, I understand reasonable use exceptions. That, that's a very common thing. And where I served before, it was very common because it was, especially when you have steep slope issues that take up a large part of your property and often results in a reasonable use exception. Thankfully, we have less of those here in Kenmore too. We just have a lot of wetland and stream area. And, and I'm concerned about canopy, but that's a whole nother topic. Thanks. Thank you for your answer.
Lori, a related question to Dwight's. Are those variances that are allowed for buffer improvements, are those built into state? Are they RCWs or is that a city issue?
It's, it's a, it's a combination. It's a city issue, but the Department of Ecology reviews our critical areas rules. And so our rules are consistent with their best available science.
And to follow on Tracy's question on that, there's a whole set of this on the Shoreline Management Act and how exceptions can be made down there, correct? Which is a different kettle of fish altogether from reasonable use exception that you're, you've been talking about because the shoreline management has to go through a whole bunch of of hoops to get there, right?
Yeah, the shoreline rules, which we updated probably three years ago, those actually had to be reviewed and approved by the state. So those rules are consistent with state rules. And because our critical area regulations are associated with our shoreline rules, given Swamp Creek and the Sammamish River and Lake Washington, our critical area rules also are consistent. So those rules were reviewed by Department of Ecology. They were reviewed by Department of Commerce. They were reviewed by Michael Schu, et cetera. Many, many people gave their input to those rules. So I feel very confident that those rules reflect current science.
Well, and I completely understand, you know, that is, those are long, they take a long time to get approved through all of the state folks that need to sign off on it. So it's, I completely understand how difficult that is.
So do we want to go back to the the questions of the memo? If, if we feel like, I've heard from everyone, I think, about concerns. And then I've heard about approaches or strategies to minimize concerns. And at that point, then what I tried to do was identify the different types of missing middle housing and identify sort of options to be considered. I identified pros and cons. I'm sure commissioners have additional pros and cons and additional options that could be formulated. And, and where, I'll tell you where I, I hope to head with this information. What I hope to do is take the concerns, take possible mitigation ideas. And staff may have some mitigation ideas as well. Get a general sense of where the commission is headed in terms of options and approaches. I've heard one option, which is to look at a specific zoning area. I've heard another option, which is to base it on avoidance of critical area corridors. And, and try to put together some almost scenarios of different ways we could tackle these things for plant, the planning commission to discuss and consider.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
That sounds good, Lori. One of the things I'd ask you to think about, an idea that's already come up and I think we tossed around a little bit among ourselves, is that there are multiple options out here in terms of the type of housing development. And some of them may be more or less appropriate depending upon the physical location. So we talked about access of places where we already have infrastructure already built, which are that, where there's that sidewalk, streets, access to transit. In my mind, that would make a more dense choices in those particular areas more acceptable. Whereas where you didn't have sidewalks, for instance, you know, or other infrastructure, they wouldn't be. I'd be thinking something about that. So I think we may, I don't think any of these are going to be, I don't think there's a single good choice here. It's probably going to be a combination of things. And it's going to be welded together with some important design, design decisions as we go along. So your approach I like very much. One of the things I'd like to also add is, and this I think goes back, does go back to something Tracy brought up. We're going to pick on you a lot tonight, I guess, Tracy. Yeah, I remind people that we like to think that what we're going through right now is truly unique, but it's not. We all went through, particularly on the East Coast, and those of us who lived there and lived through a lot of it, went through a lot of the same sort of thing 50, 60 years ago. And what you had was a population outstripping the available, particularly working class housing development. So what you had was this period of time where older residential areas where very large homes were built over a very relatively short generational period, they were subdivided into multiple apartments over time to house many people. And that's how really the problem was mitigated for a long time. And eventually, as we built more roads, more cars, people moved out. And those other things happened to those poor neighborhoods. We have good examples of that here in Seattle. If you go to, go through the Broadview area, if you go through some of the older Queen Anne districts, you'll see these older homes that have been, that are now multifamily. Kenmore was built at a different time, so we don't have those large mansion type that could be subdivided. However, as Tracy pointed out, we do have various, some early large homes that were built when, as we've already noted, family sizes were larger. And as we're, if in fact we're transitioning in a period where smaller family sizes, we could, I think, takes, allow some of that same approach where you could take a 3,500 or 4,000 square foot home and subdivide it into, into two housing units. I like that a lot because it's the same footprint. You don't have a new design you have to go through. The trees or other nature that's around it is preserved. What you're doing is you're just using that existing footprint more efficiently. I don't, we touched on this somewhat when we got into the ADUs. And there may be a crossover here. And this actually may be the same thing as an ADU because you have developer kitchen. But I think I'd be interested in knowing what regulatory burdens would be in place. What other issues there would be? Because that seems to me like, to put something like that, it will make that allowable in certain areas where, where it's appropriate.
Lori, on the, the end part of your questions, I think the only thing that I would like to bring up that we haven't really already talked about before is the issue of review, the review process. There were some, I think for townhouses, there were choices, choices where we might consider not having a review process to make it easier. And that just makes me a little bit nervous that we wouldn't have public review for projects. I, I just, I, I know we're not talking about large-scale developments, but my mind immediately went to that big townhouse development on 68th and 190th, which I think in many ways, like if we really dug into it, could teach us a lot about things that we need to change to protect the people who are living around these developments and our planet. So anyway, just not having the ability to have public review just made me feel a little bit, little bit nervous.
Yeah, I, I want to ask you, in that particular one, under townhouses, townhouses, there were three potential approaches. And the one where the review was minimized really had to do with the scale of the project. So do you feel that for all townhouse projects that review is needed? Knowing that the review adds time and cost? Or is there a threshold below which it's not needed?
Right, yeah, maybe that's something to, to discuss. I, I did say in my notes, favor A or C. If smaller project means like about the same footprint as the house it might be replacing was my but I feel like, yeah, I guess that's something that, that we would need to flesh out or I'd need to hear more from other commissioners and from staff to really come to a more solid conclusion about what I felt. I was just reacting to the idea of just no review, I guess.
I would echo that same concern. I think, given that these developments tend to have the biggest impact on those who are closest to them, I think they in general need to have an opportunity to hear their voice. Just the whole idea of specifically excluding public input and something that's going to have a major impact on, on a property owner's life, I just, I find that very difficult. What, what, and this maybe overlaps going back a little bit to what, what would make any of these options, I think, more acceptable? Is he thinking about maybe a general principle? That if the design of the new, we're talking about new properties here as opposed to the subdivision, subdivided property that I was talking earlier. If the design that was proposed met the same setback requirements, the same design requirements, same height requirements as the neighborhood is already existing. To me, that, that really speeds up the, the whole approval process and acceptability. It's telling me it's going to fit fairly compatibly into the neighborhood itself. It's one we get into, like the example Jim gave, and there was a bunch of also in the Seattle Times a while back, where you really go out of scale with the neighborhood that I think becomes the problem. And I think that's what most concerned the most people.
So if we go back to the first question, duplexes and triplexes, is, does the commission have a sense of which of these options are most preferable to pursue? Remember, this is our first conversation. This is not the end of the discussion because we still have to address all the concerns. I'm just asking if you preliminarily have a preference for these approaches. So for duplexes and triplexes, they could be allowed throughout the city. They could be on corner lots in single-family neighborhoods. That's what Bothell did and only for duplexes. And then option C was in a specific area or zoning district that permits missing middle housing. I think I heard Commissioner Lutzis say he liked C. I don't know if I am reading that correctly, but okay.
Yes, yes.
Do others want to weigh in?
I'm in favor of that too.
Yeah, I'm going to go with, I'm going to go with C as well, yeah. I like, I like the point that duplexes and triplexes also, and it gets to the question of, you know, design standards. I mean, there's a lot of houses right now that, you know, there'd be no noticeable change if they were duplexes or triplexes, right? They're effectively that already. They're very much like ADUs. And so again, that, that's just a preliminary thought, but I, I like option C too.
I'm there, but I also agree with Mike about the issue of public review. We, we've just got to continue with that type of situation. But when it's very much the same footprint or within a percentage of the same footprint, I, I you know, that we have a long ways to go, but I'm in line with that. And taking into consideration environmental concerns too.
And my preference for the duplexes and triplexes, I think, is more along the lines of considering the natural habitat corridors and, and, you know, natural landscape feature corridors. That would be my first priority.
So kind of like the inverse of option C, instead of in specific zones, just outside of specific zones?
I guess so, Nathan, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Thanks for saying that succinctly.
Well, maybe a little of both.
Well, I'm thumbs up as well for C. Mike, I'd be interested, maybe a little more discussion on B. But I would want it to be significantly constrained along major transportation corridors. And the design pieces of that, particularly the standard that I talked about earlier, might make that acceptable. But I'm not sure that we even need to. I, I think C would probably give us enough of what we're looking for.
Um, so moving on to cottage housing. Again, that's a small-scale development. We had, when we did the developer panel in 2019, there were, there was a cottage housing developer. And her perspective was that, yes, there would be a marketing Kenmore. I would say that existing cottage housing developments are not a affordable certainly, but they do provide a diversity of housing types. They're very desirable, which of course has resulted in increased costs, but they have been, they have proved to be very marketable and and very popular. So for these housing, this housing type, again, throughout the city in the missing middle housing zone or two options.
Can I ask you a question for informational purposes? What what's, what size lot, minimum size lot would a developer need to develop a cottage housing?
Um, I'm not sure what you would need. I I can go back and figure that out. I think they run about eighteen dwelling units per acre. And I think the normal size is less than, I wanna say less than fifteen, it's maybe ten. So that might conclude result in a calculation that you need half an acre, but truly I would have to.
Yeah, thank you. That that's helpful to know just a ballpark for for the purposes of this conversation.
Right, right. And and there are a lot of models and in fact, I think um that this developer from the cottage company who came and spoke, you might be interested in reviewing that that video. They, uh she had a lot of comments about cottage housing. And I think she said that uh a couple of places have model ordinances. Kirkland has a missing middle housing, cottage housing ordinance. They did a demonstration project and despite the fact that the rules have been in place for quite a while, they only have, I think, two cottage housing developments. It's kind of a niche housing.
I wanted to ask that again. When you you said eighteen per acre?
And they're not divided into the specific lots typically. It's like, it's like a condominium development. The uh the units, the grounds are are all managed.
Right, it's one, it's one acre. I mean, that's, that can be interesting.
Right.
That's the equivalent of multifamily uh development.
The density is is higher, but you, it's because the units are quite small, less than a thousand square feet.
Yeah, but it's still very dense.
Right. But they're lovely. I have to tell you, they're lovely.
Oh, I I agree, but it could be.
But so let's say they're, and are they off, oh, I just don't, it's so a thousand square feet times eighteen is eighteen thousand square feet and and forty thousand square feet is an acre plus parking once, one, well. You know, I'm just starting to divide it down and that, boy, that's, that can be slightly dense.
And and again, the um the the sizes of the developments, I don't think any were at eighteen units.
Okay.
They were smaller.
Small.
In terms of the number of houses around the courtyard.
Thank you.
Hey, go ahead, Nathan.
I I was just going to say, I think this kind of ties in with the the aims and focuses of Tracy and Dwight here. But with cottage housing, even though they're smaller developments, the fact is they are separate from each other and it does develop a larger maybe footprint on the property per se. If you're also incorporating walk spaces in between them and the areas, the common areas in between them as well. So they may have a overall larger footprint um in terms of environmental impact than say um a duplex or a triplex, even if it is just uh two or three cottages. So kind of hearing this and thinking about the environmental impact, I would be more in favor of having having them in specific zones or missing middle zones. And that way, um kind of with the same same focus we had on on the last point, uh we can make sure that that these developments don't have adverse environmental impacts, especially with um you know, them being broken up across a larger property. Instead of, you know, one's, you know, mid-sized footprint, it's a lot of smaller footprints, but it disrupts a larger area.
Right, and also closer to services and transit too. I I I I like that that thought too.
Yes, that as well.
But I I think, when I think about this, I think there is a place for this type of housing in certain areas. But given our small amount of available housing, I know there's there's a thing called opportunity cost. And these, I think, would be very nice developments and probably would sell very well, but if we are, if we're constrained for space and we're trying to increase our density, I think there's probably, within the areas we're discussing here, uh there are probably other options, particularly multifamily type of options, uh that would give us more units for that use of that space than we get out of uh cottage housing, but I think it's something we, you almost want to let the market decide what what to do here. Maybe opting on this, but the decision, but it it's a, it's a, it's a hard one for me to really think through.
Right. I I I think that the developer thought there was definitely a marketing Kenmore. Market can't decide because we don't allow it currently. So the question would be, is it worth providing a an addition additional diverse housing type or not?
There there's something that I do like about that housing type. Um and maybe Lori, what it is, is that they're just so cute, like you said. Um, maybe that's what it is, like it's activating my, the part of my brain that likes babies and puppies and kittens and stuff. Um, and I, but I, but I do think like on a more serious note, there's, I know that smaller dwellings are more energy efficient and that is a positive environmental impact. Um but then like Nathan said, they're taking up a larger footprint than maybe like the same number, same density in in like a duplex or orplex, for example, I don't know. So I feel like for me, I feel like, I I still feel like there's more to tease out, like more about the pros and cons before I feel really certain about um making strong recommendations about them, but I am really intrigued by by them. And I think that that there probably are some positives.
So if we turn to the question of townhouses, um we've already talked some about the review process. They're presently, as I mentioned previously, they're already allowed in single-family zones, but through a review process, conditional use permit or uh through a special plating process. So really, the options would be to eliminate that special review process or require that special review process, but only for projects of a certain size. And I don't know. I think I've heard from Commissioners Bonusshinsky and Vanderland, but I didn't hear others weigh in on this question.
Go ahead, Nathan.
Uh Lori, can you just jog my memory really quick about how many townhouses do we have right now in the city of Kenmore?
Oh, I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't know off the top of my head.
No, 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 that's all right.
They're extremely popular at the moment, but not, I I think we've only had one, maybe two in a single-family zone. That just has not happened historically. That has happened within the last year. Uh most have gone into commercial zoning, uh community business, et cetera. And I will say, um just for as a piece of information, we have had a couple of projects that wanted to go into the city's TOD area. They, there's such a market for townhomes apparently, that they wanted to go into the TOD and and the city council just within the last month put a moratorium on applications in the TOD to give um the the planning commission and the city council time to figure out what exactly the expectations are for the TOD.
Okay, that's interesting to kind of hear about how that's going. I mean, I I, my opinion on this would be, since they're flourishing in the way they are, even if not in residential areas, but they're they're still coming up in commercial zones, that maybe our process, the way it is, is all right. Right now, the market's driving for them and they're popping up, so I I don't think we need to do too much at this point. I mean, later on down the road, if we hit a wall and run out of room, then maybe we can look at this again, but right now it sounds like they've found their kind of niche. And they're, they're popping up, there's a demand for them, and it's already kind of down that track of fulfilling what we're trying to to accomplish right now.
So I'm more or less agree with that. I'm I'm not for eliminating public review regardless of the scale.
I'm here. Uh I would add maybe for discussion later on is I I view townhouses maybe differently depending upon where they are. Uh if you're talking about in the TOD, uh I'd be more interested in uh having different design requirements here that maybe allow more density versus if they were going to be, we do, of course, we don't have this today. If we're going to have a townhouse development within a single-family neighborhood, uh again, have that subject to the same sort of design standards as the neighborhood itself. So you could have a a multi-story uh townhouse in the TOD where you want more density. Uh but you wouldn't be necessarily have that uh in in a single-family area, which has a, you know, generally a two-story limit.
Yeah. I'm gonna be a little bit of an outlier in this, but I might, I might actually like um option um C here. You know, to at least hold open the possibility. I mean, reduce review, I I, you know, I I don't know exactly what you had in mind here, Lori, if it would be uh, you know, a certain size and scale, something along the lines of duplexes or or triplexes. Is that what you had in mind? Okay. You know, to keep, keep the option, option open for potentially, I I know it does seem to be working now, but if we are trying to create more affordable housing and still have, you know, good public review, that to me, that might, that might make sense, but that may not carry, carry the day here, so.
Okay, um so that's great feedback. Are we able to tackle the question of smaller lots with smaller single-family homes?
I'm in favor of that.
I would be as well, but again, subject to the same uh design requirements, that they would be constrained to the same uh design requirements as the neighborhood itself, particularly uh in terms of square foot, square footage setbacks. You could spend a smaller lot, but you're gonna have to shrink the house.
Right.
And and height. So if you have, as you say, if you have appropriate development controls in place, I think that would work. But you're gonna have to be very careful with those.
For small, smaller lots with smaller single-family houses, I I I concur that I would, you know, I would like to see the scale of the of the dwelling be match the scale of the lot um to match the the neighborhood. Um also, I would say I would like tree retention to be prioritized. I don't wanna, I I I don't, I I just don't wanna recommend this, you know, smaller lots, but then that means like lots of trees are getting cut down, especially significant trees. I'd also like to see also green stormwater infrastructure used even on these smaller lots, so have the lot be smaller, but be big enough so that there's still room for that infrastructure. And then also, I think that Jim Howard's feedback applies here about design standards and the green factor score. But given those, I think smaller lots are are fine.
Right.
I completely agree with what Tracy said, but I wanna emphasize the all those other things are really important, but I wanna emphasize that what we don't, I don't wanna see is a smaller lot and they build it up to the the limits of five feet from the, from the uh lot line all the way across and then two story, two stories up and what we have is a three thousand square foot house on a uh twenty-five hundred square foot lot. I mean, that's not, I don't think that, that certainly is not my value that where we wanna go with this, and I would hope that the majority of the, and I sense the majority of the commission is of the same mind with that. Cause otherwise, we're just, we're making things worse.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Dwight, I I think I personally wanna break away from some of the harmful development patterns that we have gotten ourselves into and those like giant houses that practically match the footprint of the lot. I feel like are are one of those patterns that I would like to see us move away from. Um in part because there's no room for green stormwater infrastructure on those lots. There's no like, you're probably not retaining many trees if you're building like that, so I, yeah.
And I don't think that's, you know, if they were, not only is that, you know, all correct, but I don't think that type of building on that type of lot is going to be affordable. That's the other issue, cause it's back to a big home, regardless, land is going to be expensive.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Just real quick, I think.
Yeah, sure.
And it, hooking back into something that um Mike has brought up a number of times, I don't think that scale of building is very people oriented. Um so that's part of why I feel resistant to it. But thank you.
And I just want to point out that um in the staff, from the staff perspective, the idea was always smaller houses, some restriction on house size. It was never build any size house you want on a small lot.
Yeah. No, I I just wanna say, I I agree with the the points there and proportionality is obviously essential. I think it's also essential to keep in mind that what was it, a third of the people in the ser- only a third of the people in the survey supported smaller lot sizes. However, if it was, you know, if we could demonstrate that it would also bring, you know, proportionally smaller homes, I think that would probably go a long ways towards bringing that percentage of, uh you know, support up quite a bit, along with, you know, the design and other other features, so. Did we, Lori, was there any more information in the survey about beyond just the the number of thirty-two percent on smaller supporting smaller lot uh sizes? Was there any more?
There may have been some demographic uh information, which I don't know off the top of my head, but uh there was certainly no discussion of why someone wouldn't want
Right.
smaller lots.
Yeah.
But I I can certainly understand if the reason was a big house on a small lot.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, that's a very good uh assumption there, yeah. Go ahead, Mike.
Uh just to clarify, I wanna make sure that uh when I was speaking, I was speaking in favor of option A. But this would be done through the plating process, so there would be uh public uh involvement there and not the you're not gonna rezone the entire city. You'd have a a plating process, shop flat process that would allow that to happen with review. Sorry, Nathan, I didn't mean to step on you.
You're, you're good, you're good. Um I was just going to say, um I guess I'm a little tad hesitant to jump in right now and be all gung ho on the smaller properties until we figure out what the concerns of our residents are in the city. I feel that, you know, as an uh as an appointed representative, if only thirty-two percent supports this idea, there's a large majority that do not, and I'd like to maybe tease that out a little bit more, maybe another survey or so just to figure out their concerns and hopefully address those. And once that has more popular support, then I'd be more than happy to kind of support that, if if that makes sense. I guess if I had to choose a a position kind of tentatively right now, I'd I'd be on board with Commissioner Vanderline. But um that's, I guess, my position is I'd like to maybe investigate this a little bit more, understand what the hesitancies are in the community. Um and then I think I'd feel more And then I think I'd feel more confident representing that position on behalf of our residents.
Fair, good point. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I, I think, Nathan, you made me think about this a little bit more. Conceptually, what I have in my mind is that, Laura, you're gonna go away and take the information we gave you, refine each one of these options, and then we'll come back and have some further discussion. Because even though I'm talking about this would be acceptable if we did these things, that doesn't mean that all of these choices are of equal weight to me. I would like us to have the opportunity to go back and say, you know, this one would be our primary option. These three down here are much, if we really felt we had to do these, then maybe we would go there. But I'd like to have an opportunity to prioritize and maybe even drop some of the options or add some ways to pick them up.
This, this is in no way is the final answer. But actually, what I'm hoping to do is to summarize what I heard tonight. So I'm going to talk about concerns. I'm going to talk about ways to minimize those concerns. I can lay out kind of where the commission fell on some of these topics. And then the next part of the discussion is really to weigh what scenarios is the planning commission supportive of as we move back into another round of, of community engagement.
And Lori, maybe just kind of outline just tentatively timing.
Right.
When we're expecting this, and also the public input as well, that might sort of help the commission.
Yeah. So at your next meeting, which I believe is October 5th, that would be the meeting where I would summarize what I heard, talk about ways that the commission has identified to mitigate concerns, talk about ways staff might suggest to mitigate concerns, and, and then lay out approaches that we've talked about tonight. Also, in the next packet, we hope to have the pricing information. So you'll have a better sense of what these things, how would they rent for, what they sell for, et cetera. Then the second meeting in October, we hope to sort of finalize some scenarios in preparation for a community forum on housing in November, where we would bring forward these ideas for public engagement. And we're talking with our consultant about how to make that happen. Also, in October, we're having kind of a questionnaire. It's not scientifically valid or anything like that. But we'll raise some of the tough questions, maybe that come out of these planning commission discussions, to take to the community. So I, I've already heard one of those questions tonight, which is the smaller lot thing. That would be a good question to say, well, you know, if there were smaller houses on smaller lots, how do you feel about that? Or what is it about smaller lots that you don't like? That kind of a question that would be available on social media. And also, we're doing outreach to targeted groups to try to bring in people who we don't normally hear from. So, so that's kind of the, the place, so that by the end, the goal is by the end of November, to have a pretty good idea of where we're headed with this topic. And then, you know, public hearings and regulations and all those things won't happen until 20, early, early 2022.
Well, anything more for us tonight, Lori? I see, I see tiny home villages are the next one. Are we gonna defer that until another, another night or?
Yeah, that's fine. If, if that's the commission's choice, we can pursue it tonight, or you can save it for next time.
Well, we're close to nine o'clock, and that's our typical closing time. And I certainly want to give it enough time for discussion. Has anybody really wanted to pursue this tonight? Anybody feeling very strongly to tackle this one? So seeing none, why don't we, why don't we put that on a, another, another agenda, please, Lori?
Okay. The other thing that's coming back to you next time is the revised vision statement. So I, I tried to take the comments from last time to write some surrounding information, call out certain issues. And so next time, hopefully, the commission can settle on this early, early draft. And that, too, would be part of the community involvement effort. So that's the goal.
All right. Well, anything more for us that tonight from Lori or Debbie or?
No.
Anything more from my colleagues here? All right. Well, thanks very much, everybody. Have a good night, and we'll adjourn this meeting. We'll see you in October.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.